Good evening and welcome to the February 24th, 2020 meeting of the Shawnee City Council. At this time, I am Mayor Michelle Duster. I'll be chairing this meeting. I'll do a roll call at this time. Councilmember Thomas?
Present.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Present.
Councilmember Kimling?
Present.
Councilmember Larson-Benau?
Present.
Councilmember Nappin?
Present.
Councilmember Constance?
Present.
Councilmember Chaffee?
Present.
Thank you. And we have some scouts in the audience tonight, so if you please come forward and lead us in a Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence, and then I'll have you introduce yourselves and tell us what troop you're with. Whenever you're ready. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, if you'll turn around and introduce yourselves and tell us which troop you're with.
Uh, hi. We have a point at 4:51. Try again.
What's your name?
Sean Luen.
I'm Sean Luen.
Thank you so much. Next, I'll explain our procedures for public input. During the meeting, I'll offer the opportunity for public input. If you'd like to speak to the council at any of those times, please come forward to the microphone. I'll ask you to state your name and address for the record, then you may offer your comments. So that members of the audience can hear your comments, I'd ask that you speak directly into the microphone. By policy, comments are limited to five minutes. No person may speak more than twice to any one agenda item. Only comments related to city business are permitted. Comments and remarks that are personal, impertinent, or slanderous are not permitted. Disruptive acts are not permitted. In order to conduct an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified meeting, individuals who do not limit their comments to the business or affairs of the city, or who result in insults, name-calling, et cetera, will be directed to cease and conclude their public comments. After you're finished, please sign the form on the podium to ensure we have an accurate record of your name and address. In addition, while we won't do a roll call vote on every vote, I will state councilmembers' names who vote in minority, so that our listening audience will have a clear and accurate record of the vote. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have an item they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Will be approved.
Motion's been made. Seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is mayor's items, and I have one item tonight. I would like to welcome Bob Hamilton, who will be presenting the AAA Gold Award to the Police Department Traffic Safety Unit. Welcome yet again.
Getting to be an every-year thing. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, for allowing me to be here this evening. I'm here representing AAA Insurance plus Kansas Department of Transportation. I'm what's called a law enforcement liaison. There's four of us across the state, and we're in traffic safety, and we work between law enforcement and the government, I guess you could say, on complaints, enforcements, and things we have. AAA asks us, when we travel the state, to find law enforcement agencies that we feel have went beyond the call of duty on traffic enforcement objectives that we have. And your police department is only one of 38 that are receiving this award. This is the eighth straight year that you've received this award. Some of the things that they have done to gain this award is include having a community-based traffic safety committee that meets regularly. It's called Operation Impact. And we meet once a month, once a month on the Kansas side and the next month on the Missouri side, so it's law enforcement agencies from both sides. Having a departmental policy requiring the use of seat belts. Working with the Mill Valley High School to reward student seat belt wearers with the Bucks for Buckles Initiative. In education, they are recognized this year for their teen driver alcohol texting while driving, seat belt use, and child car seat installation programs. For the repaired driver, seat belt usage, aggressive driving, and safe arrival holiday efforts, enforcements. Use of their storm database to track areas of high crime and traffic crashes. And they were also recognized for their close coordination with the Traffic Engineering Department on Operation Green Light to keep Shawnee Mission parkway traffic moving during rush hours. Their excellent work also goes to show that they dropped their fatality rates in 2019 from five to two. And seat belt usage in this area is adult at 96 percent, teens at 94, and our char-passenger restraint usage at 98 percent. A lot of you probably wondered why our state usage is down so much. Well, I'm not picking on any part of the state of Kansas, but being a retired law enforcement officer myself, I know this part of the state takes traffic safety very seriously. And I've always said, and I'm sure a lot of these officers in the back of the room feel the same way, we never know when we stop someone on a seatbelt violation, what the outcome is. I know of one outcome where a gentleman was stopped on one day by an officer. I don't know if it was a trooper or who it was. Two days later, he rolled his pickup, walked away with minor injuries. So seat belts do save lives. Like I said, they're receiving their eighth consecutive Gold Award this year for demonstrating outstanding efforts. So Mayor, City Council, I also want to thank you guys, because without you, the police department couldn't do their jobs out here that they need to have done. So at this time, it's my honor to present, I don't know if it's Chief Moser or Chief Larson.
I'll do it same time.
Okay. One, two, three. Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Bob, and a huge thank you to our Traffic Safety Unit. There is no doubt we have the best of the best.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Thompson?
Just one quick question. He referenced this, only 37 departments. Is that nationwide? Is that in the state? In the west? It's the state of Kansas. He's lost.
He's gone. I was gonna read that out loud.
Thirty-seven departments. Is that only 37 in the state of Kansas or nationwide?
Thirty-seven.
State of Kansas. Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. You may go. The next item is appointments. Item number one is to consider an appointment to the Johnson County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board. Chief Moser is due to retire in March, which creates a vacancy on the JCAB Board. I'm recommending the appointment of Major Ben Mendoza to fill the unexpired term that ends on May 5th, 2022. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I accept a motion.
Will be approved.
Second. Motion's been made. Seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Major Mendoza, will you please stand to be recognized for your support of our community? Next item is business from the floor. Is there anyone who has comments on an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ryan Brick. I'm one of the board members for our HOA at Deer Walk Down the Road. I'm kind of getting real tired of dealing with car break-ins. It's been an ongoing process. I've been broken into three or four times myself. My motorcycle's been stolen. It just seems endless. When I'm getting at, we already have wireless, you know, cameras at the intersections, correct? And they use those to, the cops can go back and backtrack.
They're not wireless. They're wired into the wires of the stoplight system.
They're powered.
Powered, yeah.
But they transmit their signal wirelessly.
I don't know if they...
They're hardwired.
They're hardwired. That's what I thought, yeah.
Well, that kind of ruins my idea. I was hoping since they're at the intersection, I thought they'd be wireless signaling. Why couldn't we put them in complexes throughout the city? I get that. That would be technically private property, but if the city would manage them, then maybe they could, like our HOA, would be willing to pay for the hardware itself. That's what I was getting at. And then, in the long run, since, I don't know, the police are here, a lot of these break-ins occur at complexes because people can come and go and blend in, is my interpretation. So I would think in the long run, that would save money for the city and, you know, cut down on crime.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we, I don't know if it's the same individual or not, Councilman Jenkins, forwarded an email and said, "We're working with our police department," and so we're working to set a meeting with your HOA neighborhood to kind of look at some of those issues and see what we can do to help deter some of those issues, so.
I heard you.
I appreciate it. All right. That was it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have comments that is an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Kelsey DeVryan, 740 Mainstones. Just a question or suggestion. Is the state of this city gonna be livestreamed anywhere?
Yes.
It is on Facebook or on the website?
I know the Shawnee Mission post does it. You're doing it on Facebook, too? Okay. Oh, you're welcome. Okay, that was it. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Evening, Council. How are you tonight? My name's Tony Gillette, 216 1360, Terrace. Question for you, and I see our Perks Director is here, so this might be good for him to answer that question. There's a neighbor of mine in Hills of the Forest Creek. There's an entrance to our parkway streamway system that goes off of Lake Crest and 61st Terrace, 61st Street area. There's a new entryway into that park streamway system that was put in, and there's, my backyard butts up to this drainage area there, and I believe the developer put in a bridge, a concrete bridge, to divert the water that does flow through there year-round, which does go back behind my yard and several other neighbors. The problem is debris from several of the storms they've gone through have clogged up the drain. They put drains in, and they're about eight inches, two of them. And so tree debris and garbage, and the water was spilling all over the place with snowmelt. Lots of problems just preying on getting access to that parkway. So if somebody can either address that, either from the parks, I don't know if that's common area or if that's parks area, but if somebody can look into that, it would be great. The neighbor was complaining on the south side of the streamway that that backup is causing flooding into his backyard and washing his yard out. So that could be looked into. I'd appreciate some assistance on that. I don't know if that's common area for the land, having been on a HOA before. I know sometimes that's not city access or park access, so.
We can look into it. So is that address, so it's directly behind your address? So if we take your address?
It'll be right at the corner of Lake Crest and 61st Street. There's a merger of those new, two new divisions there. That was the street that used to dead-end 60th Terrace that ended, and about two or three years ago, that street was punched through, so if we can get some help in there for that neighbor in the backside, it would be helpful. Thank you.
We'll look at it. Thank you. Any other topics not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none. The next item is public items. Item number one is to consider ordinance number 3317, approving an amended tax increment financing project plan for Belmont Promenade TIF District and Resolution Number 1905, providing notice for a public hearing to consider modifying the Belmont Promenade Community Improvement District. On February 25th, 2019, the governing body approved the TIF project plan and the modifications to the CID. The developers requested additional changes to the TIF project plan. Ordinance is required to approve the modification to the TIF plan, and a resolution is required to provide notice of a public hearing to consider modifying the CID to reflect the changes. The developer proposes no changes to the amount or term of the incentives granted. There are two recommended actions to consider. First recommended action is consider passing ordinance number 3317. Six votes are required for approval. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're all clear on what we're doing here. The revisions to the original TIF, I've looked at those pretty thoroughly. I know many of us have. I did not see a substantial change to the original proposal that we had, that they brought to us originally, and had been already passed. So we already have an active TIF there. The significant change was essentially reducing the number of apartment units. Otherwise, the land use, all this stuff seemed to be pretty much the same. So again, in terms of saying, well, we really don't need to do anything with the TIF, so with approving this ordinance 3317, simply just adopt those changes and accept those and say they're not substantial, is that the end result?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to be sure that I was voting for there. Thank you.
Ms. Thomas?
And so this was passed some time ago, so we're not resetting the clock or anything on this TIF at all?
No. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council? Anyone from the audience? Oh, sorry. Miss Nappin?
Yeah, so my viewpoint on this, like you said, there's no substantial changes. Actually, the changes that were made, I think, are good ones. There's actually about 100 less apartments. I think the neighbors have been, they're happy with the project now. And the bottom line is, we all want to get dirt moved on this site, and this would hopefully allow it to start by May. I think we're all kind of frustrated and hoping that they don't come back with any additional changes, because if they ask for additional changes, it's likely, I don't know, but likely we won't probably go through. So I would recommend or ask for us to approve it and move forward.
Anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this item? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Don Lysit. I live at 6850 Bell Road. Has been a long road. No question about it. We're towards the end of that road and hopefully the start of a new one. As the council may recall, when we were last before you on this matter, the neighborhood did not oppose the amended, amended, amended project. But at that time, I said, and I still maintain, I don't think that it is an appropriate use of city funds, taxpayers' funds, depending on how you want to look at it, for private projects unless they're truly unique and truly bring some benefit to the city. And I said at that time, and I don't want to appear hypocritical, that I do oppose. I'm here to speak against this. I realize we are not voting, or you're not voting, on that aspect tonight, but I wanted to get that on the record. And I just, today, I saw an article in the Kansas City Business Journal where some of the tenants have been announced. One of them's Petco, which I don't know if it's the one up by Target there, simply moving across the street. I can't believe they'd be putting two of them that close, but the article didn't say anything about that. And the other one's a, what they call, or one of the other ones, Five Below, which, as I understand, it's sort of almost like a dollar store, but it's for $5 instead of $1. And then Hobby Lobby coming back, that's probably a good thing. Dick's Sporting Goods, again, it didn't clarify whether this is a whole new sporting goods or moving over from Merriam. But it just seems like we're constantly robbing Peter to pay Paul. It's a little Kansas-Missouri thing. Let's give them a better deal. They're gonna move over here. Now, we're gonna give you a better deal and move here. And I just think that needs to be taken into account when you make your decision, fully acknowledging you're not making that decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made. Seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. The second recommended action is consider adopting Resolution Number 1905. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak on this item? Accept a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made. Seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
Aye.
Motion passes with councilmembers Thomas, Jenkins, and Kimling voting in dissent. And Nappin? So then, that motion did not pass. That motion fails. The next item on the agenda is staff items. Item number one is to consider revisions to Policy Statement Number 56, PS 56, Comprehensive User Fee Schedule related to small cell fees and sign variance fees. Staff is recommending revisions to PS 56 to incorporate updated small cell fees in conjunction with new legislation and reincorporate a sign variance fee. Recommended action is consider approving the revisions. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Accept a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made. Seconded on this item. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to consider the 2020 Federal Legislative Program. A draft of the 2020 Federal Legislative Program is included. Staff will be available for questions about the proposed program. Recommended action is consider adopting the 2020 Federal Legislative Program with any recommended changes. Assistant City Manager Guard is here. If the council has any questions, does anyone on the council have any questions? Mr. Jenkins?
Just a comment for under flood control and mapping. I'd like to make a little addition there, just a kind of editorial revision on the portion of that issue that has position. And since position, I would like it to read, "The city of Shawnee," and I would insert, "has achieved a noteworthy community rating system Level 6 from FEMA. As a strong supporter of floodplain management and hazard mitigation, Shawnee supports new floodplain mapping by FEMA of the Kansas River basin, lower Kansas River basin, et cetera, et cetera." And the rest, I just have one insertion. Really, I would like to put that in there, is just to give guidance to our congressional representatives that, hey, we're kind of good at this hazard mitigation thing. We're really on board. We're really supportive of the NFIP. We've done great things here. How about getting out and studying Kansas River for us? Because I think that may, having been on the receiving end of that at FEMA, it did make a difference where you did the studies, because there's limited funding. And I think the idea that we're doing quite a bit in that area might put us toward the top of the list. May not, but it doesn't hurt to give it that shot. So I'd just like to add that language if we could.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, accept a motion.
I would move to approve with the edits that Mr. Jenkins has proposed. Second.
Motion's been made. Seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item number three.
Madam Mayor. I'm sorry. Can I ask you a question? Can we go back and talk about where we are with the project, with the Belmont project, since the first part passed and the second part failed? It felt like we went really quickly past it, and I just want to make sure everyone's
So what happened is...
What the ramifications are.
Yeah, so what we're doing is just trying to set the public hearing for that March date, and so is the motion failed to set the public hearing. CID's already been approved. It was approved, I think someone asked earlier, February 25th, 2019. So the CID has been approved from 1.3 to 1.6. So this was an attempt similar to kind of revising the project plan to clarify that in the CID language, so.
So if we don't have a public hearing, then what happens?
You asked a question on a night when we don't have any bond counsel here. I was reading through, trying to figure that out myself. I assume we go back to the original structure. What I do not know is, from the bond standpoint and from our financial consultant's standpoint, how much that impacts the project plan itself in terms of the financial plan and the financial analysis. Is that kind of what you were thinking, too?
Yeah, so I think what we're gonna have to do is kind of bring this back to see kind of how substantial that change was, and if we need to clarify that, and what has already been approved, and look at that timetable. So we'll have to do a little bit of legal analysis to see, and if we don't want to have a public hearing to make that clarification, if what's been approved can stay in effect, or if it needs to truly reset. So I think we're gonna have to go back and do a little bit of legal research on that to check that.
Would any of the councilmembers that were against it share why they don't want to have the public hearing? Mr. Nappin?
Yeah, so I think, I think what was reflected, from my viewpoint all the way through the election, I've stated that I don't really like the idea of CIDs. It's basically a hidden tax on taxpayers. When you, basically, anytime you buy anything within that complex, that development, there's a tax added, and it's just at the bottom of your receipt, and very few people know about it. And so, I'm not saying I would never vote for CID, but the next question is, how big should that CID be? What percent? And 1.6 is pretty darn high compared to standard. So that was my reason for not wanting to revisit it. Let somebody else talk.
Ms. Larson-Benau?
I'm sorry. I voted in favor. One of the reasons I voted in favor was, is my understanding that if we don't do this, that the Shawnee Mission School District would not be able to receive their funds, the aid funds. Can you speak to that? Or was that, because you said it.
That's in regards to the TIF portion of it, so that's been resolved. This is just the CID. This is the Community Improvement District portion of that.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, I generally not in favor of CID taxes as well, because I think they are a hidden tax. In fact, if I had my way, I'd like to see us pass an ordinance in this community, saying, "You want to come in to get a CID? Put your proposal forward. If it's appropriate for a CID, you may gain the favor of the council on that." But I'd like to see something posted on the doors. You walk in that establishment, you will be paying 1.6 cents more on the dollar for everything you buy in this establishment, because I think it's just, most people do not look at their bill real carefully to see if there's a tax on top of the tax. So I think it's a hidden tax. I think it's an impaired tax. I just don't agree with it. There has to be some really good reasons why. We're already at 1.3 percent. I think that's pretty darn high. To go 1.6, I think is just egregious, quite frankly. That means the sales tax in that shopping center would be 11.15 percent. Now, you're really getting into some serious double digits at that point, folks, so I definitely disagree with raising that tax any further. It's already going to be close to 11 percent as it is, and I think it's almost shameful. But that's what we, it's already been approved, but I'm not going to improve additional amount.
Okay, so it wasn't the amount of the, I mean, it wasn't the public hearing that you were against, it was the amount of the CID?
Well, that's the reason we go to public hearing. If we could, if we just could stop here, why would we go through all the gyrations and machinations if it's just a no-go anyway? So I thought this was an opportunity to say no right now, and that way we don't even have to proceed further, we don't have to show up on the agenda. It's a done issue.
Well, I appreciate the clarification, because I couldn't understand why we were voting against the public hearing, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, if it's an exercise of futility, if you don't have a support for it going forward, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to send it forward here again.
Ms. Thomas?
I think, too, it's important to know, this goes on for 20 years, and that's a long time. So I just, to increase the CID, it's high, this project has been going on, I'm not even sure how long, but quite some time to get where it is, and now it's been shrunk down. You know, not a major shift, what would be defined as a major shift, but it is a significant shift, and to then put further burden on the taxpayer, I just couldn't support it.
Mr. Zimmerman?
So, I want to make sure I understand what's going on here. If we're not going to have a public hearing, feels to me like the whole project stalled. Can we speak to that?
Well, I don't want to speculate on behalf of the developer, but I just want to make one clarification, just to make sure that we're on the same page. The 1.3 to 1.6 has already been approved, so this is just more of a modification to that language based on the revision to the TIF project plan. So it's not, it's not a change. I just want to make sure that that's clear. So if you go back, it's... So if you go back, it's, this was actually approved, I'm trying to, just wanna make sure factually that, so this was changed on February 25th, so almost a year ago, so it's just more of a clarification to that CID based on the TIF project plan, I just wanna make sure.
So then this is just solely a public hearing that we're voting against for something that's already been approved?
Correct.
Mr. Nappin and the Ms. Constance?
Why were we having a public hearing?
Well, because of the issuance of special obligation bonds, and legal counsel felt like similar to revising that TIF project plan, that this, then the description of the plan and some of those things needed to be clarified in that CID ordinance as well.
Did it get approved at one point?
Correct, yep.
Ms. Constance?
Okay, so, because we just ended that with a 4-4 after unanimous vote in support for the first part, we are now not moving forward with this project, and it is dead? But because, because what I've heard is, we are not supporting the public hearing. But if there's no hearing, then we're done. I'm not understanding why we wouldn't just have the hearing and then discuss concerns then. It just felt like a very shocking switch from unanimous to it's dead, but with no talking about it prior. So.
I voted the way I did, because I was in favor of the TIF, and I hope that maybe the project can go forward, but not the percent of the CID. The only thing I wanna point out on a CID is that 1.6 percent, not only is it 20 years, but the city gets, the entire 1.6 percent goes back to the developer, from the taxpayer. So I think the discussion is just a matter of how much we wanna give to the developer, and 1.6 percent is still there.
That was already approved though, right? You do understand that.
Yeah, I know that, but my understanding, and I guess where I'm struggling a little bit, Nolan, is, I thought we had to go back and have a public hearing, now that they changed this, in order to make sure that the 1.6 was still in play for the CID. Yeah, I think because, and I apologize unless else can speak on this, I think because of the change in that project plan, they wanted to make sure that that matched what was in the CID ordinance, and so I think they felt like they had to then modify that to make sure those clarifications existed.
Since last time I talked on this, my understanding was, I guess, maybe I'm wrong, but my thinking was that they would still have the 1.3, they just had, so it doesn't kill the project, they would have to, they'd have to decide whether or not to, they can make up the other.
It's already at 1.6.
Yeah, 1.6 is already approved.
This is just a public hearing that we've canceled. So we're not moving forward.
I'm sorry, I can't come up with any valid reason why we need to have a public hearing on it. The questions that were put before the council was whether or not this was a substantially changed project, and would have to be come back before TIF review again for the initiation of a new TIF, because the TIF would be invalidated by the fact that the changes were great enough where it mixed the old TIF, okay? And the council said it was okay, we're okay with the TIF because it wasn't a substantial improvement, very unanimously saying, we're gonna accept that. So I'm having a hard time understanding how that stops a project, getting its track, so maybe I'm just not as smart as the rest of you guys, but I don't see where that stops a damn thing. It says, we accepted the TIF, move forward with your TIF. You say they gotta get to 1.6, why are they worried about that? Why we haven't had a public hearing on that? Why we just move ahead, folks?
I think there's legal requirements that we have to have the public hearing.
For what? What are we having a public hearing for? The TIF that's already okay? The CID that's already adopted? You know, that's really confusing, guys.
Well, and I apologize, and I think really kinda the intent was just more from a housekeeping standpoint to make those modifications in that CID ordinance, to make sure things were cleared based on the changes of the scope of the project plan and what was then approved, so they wanted that to match in the CID ordinance as well. So, that was, I think that was the intent, more from a housekeeping standpoint, like I said, the 1.3 to 1.6 already been approved, but with the issuance of the special obligation bonds, they really need to make sure everything is tied up together.
Ms. Constance and Mr. Zimmerman?
Would it be helpful, and I realize we already passed this portion, would it be helpful to maybe review some of the other financial benefits that the city and surrounding school districts will see? I mean, that's been part of my motivation, also my motivation for support has been that we have worked together with neighbors, and now the project itself is closer to what they wanted in the beginning, so I have a really hard time seeing the project die right now, when we really have worked well with neighbors on this process, and now we have their support for the project, to see it just be done doesn't really make sense. So I don't know if we need to review that and answer questions before we just end it right in this moment?
Mr. Zimmerman?
I just need some clarity on what the repercussions are of the stalled vote. If we don't have a public hearing, then what?
And there would be nothing to stop us from bringing this agenda item right back and asking for a public hearing to be set again, isn't that correct?
Right.
And does this one need six, or just the first one needed six?
Just the first one, Ellen.
Correct, just the first one, and I'm gonna apologize as well, I didn't follow this as well, it was a technical request of the finance council, I didn't think it was a substantive request, I just thought it was coordinating the two districts myself. And the applicant left, and then I think they came back, and I saw, I rushed back in, I wondered how you knew, this came back up on the agenda for one thing. And maybe you have more information on what happened, after you all left, they discussed again why some council members had decided to not approve the...
See, I thought they both needed six.
The public hearing request, and both Nolan and I, we're obviously with our finance council, and maybe you've talked to them more than we have about it, we understood that this was just a housekeeping mechanism, that it was a maintenance item that was requested by our finance council to coordinate the TIF and the CID, and maybe it's something different than that. It's not actually approving the 1.3 to 1.6.
That's exactly right. My name is Heather Trower, I'm with Legacy Development, 4717 Central Street. Tonight, we're not asking you to approve the CID or the TIF, all we're asking is for you to put it on the agenda for consideration on March 23rd, just the revised TIF plan. As you guys were talking about earlier, all we've done is we've changed the unit count on the apartments.
CID.
For the CID.
Yeah, just the CID.
CID. So there's nothing really to vote on as far as approving that CID this evening, just approving, it would be on the agenda for March 23rd, and at that time, we would ask that you approve it.
So, with that being said, since my understanding is both of these votes needed six, but I'm totally, the first one needed six votes, am I allowed to accept another motion to adopt resolution number 1905? Now that we have clarification on this item, can we take another vote?
Oh boy, you guys are challenging me with these policy statements. Do you have the policy statement up where we can look at it, or do you have a recollection as to what it says?
I can pull it up.
Mr. Jenkins?
We still have an answer to a really basic question. Why do we have to have a public hearing if there's no change? Now, if we all nod our heads in the same direction, this is not a significant change or for no change, why is it necessary for us to have a public hearing and do anything at that point? To me, that was the end of the discussion, right there, boom. It's not, we all voted that it's not a significant problem here, we go ahead and continue to accept the TIF that's on the table, we're good to go. Why all these machinations, I don't really understand what the purpose of a public meeting is at this point, when we've already acknowledged that the TIF is not a significant change to the original TIF. So maybe somebody can clarify that, that's, I'm in real trouble with that one issue.
This project's been going on for like 15 years, have we had a public hearing yet? Is that why we need the public hearing, because we have not had one yet?
No, we've had them. Really, the issue is just, it's really just kind of a housekeeping issue that they want, I say they, traditionally, the attorney general will review all these bond transcripts as before these bonds are actually issued and put out to the market, so all these things have to match, and so really, it's just a housekeeping item in terms of being able to change that item to then open this back up, so that the TIF project plan and what's the language in the CID match. So I think really it was kinda seen as just a housekeeping item.
Well, doesn't the fact that we said it isn't a significant change and approved it as is, doesn't that give them the necessary information they need at the state level to say, yeah, the council saw in reviewing this that it was not a significant change, and therefore there is no need to consider the matter further?
Yep.
They're having a hard time with this.
Yeah, and I think because we've amended the TIF project plan language, that reduction in apartments, the change in some of those, in some of that language, they would prefer that that language match in the CID ordinance.
Can you tell me this is not an effort to get the TIF reauthorized, starting the clock all over again?
They have not, they have not reset, they've not asked for reset in the TIF clock.
I was saying, I did, I was asking, would that be one of the things that would be forthcoming if we move this thing to a public hearing? Why are we going to a public hearing otherwise? Like you say, it's real difficult trying to determine why we need to have a public hearing about something everybody already said yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Mayor, I'd like for us to have disclosure of what that conversation was that just went on, because nobody on the phone or in the...
Actually, it was all picked up on this microphone.
Good, okay.
Yeah, my microphone.
Yep, it was just, they were clarifying the policy statement of whether or not I can bring back a motion to reconsider the item. So we were just looking at our legal policy statement as to whether or not we can do that. So, I will accept a motion to reconsider the item of adopting resolution number 1905.
So moved. Second?
Okay, so there is a motion and a second, all those in...
Can we have converse discussion?
Oh, yeah, well, this is just the reconsideration, and then we'll have the next motion to this. So this is just, first we have to do, that's what Stephen was explaining, first we have to have the vote to reconsider the item, so I'll take that, and then we'll discuss the item. Okay, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
Move.
Motion passes with Mr. Kimleen in dissent, so now we can have discussion, and then I can accept another motion to adopt resolution number 1905. Ms. Larson-Manel?
And it only needs five votes. Okay, so I would encourage us to go ahead and set the public hearing, because one piece that we've been missing from this discussion tonight is the actual financial impact of what we're talking about here, and it would be a real shame to have this project stall or have it go away completely without actually being fully informed, having the public be fully informed of what it is that we're talking about. So, I would vote in favor of setting the public hearing.
Okay, is there a sec? Mr. Zimmerman?
I would concur with those comments.
So is that a second?
It's a second.
Ms. Thomas?
I think I would like to say that we have to be mindful to, this has been going on, I mean, so it's just not disappearing, this has been ongoing for quite some time. I was under the impression that this was part of a request to go from 1.3 to 1.6, and it obviously is not. So, I just think we need to be, if we're going to have this reconsideration, we need to be really clear, when did this even start? Have some good history on it, because you have people who are just stepping in that don't have that history, and I think it's important to be clear, is it a 1 percent TIF?
And on the, we had, so in the packet, yeah, in the packet, so the CID was passed at the 1.6 percent at the February 25th, 2019 meeting.
Okay.
According to the packet. So, yes, it was before you guys were on the council, but that part of it was already passed, and it was in the staff memo. So this is just the public hearing. And then I misunderstood, because when this said six votes, I thought both items needed six votes, so when it was 4-4, I thought it had already failed, so.
To be clear, it has to...
Mr. Nappin?
I'm sorry, it has to pass the public hearing vote to keep the 1.6?
Correct.
But that actually, to be upfront, we have highly specialized finance council that are answering those questions, and I was trying to search back to try and figure out some of the history on this. That was approved February 25th, 2019. It had something to do with the acknowledgements that were included from property owners that were set forth in the petition at the time, and the relationship between the acknowledgements that were set forth in the original CID petition approved on February 25th, 2019, and the concern of the finance council with that acknowledgement and the coordination with the certification to the county of special assessments, that's why I think they went back originally and wanted the CID to be re-noticed and set for a public hearing and then recertified to this county. Does that feel about...
Yeah, there's some timing issues and kinda with those special assessments, and so I think really more to be in line a little bit more with the current project plan and what those milestones and timelines look like in terms of the notification and when these assessments start, and when those things actually occur, so.
So the clarification was to, was in regard to the petition that was submitted to make sure that the project was consistent with the petition, obtain waivers and consents, and then have a hearing to modify the CID and levy the specials on March 23rd, 2020. So it did have to do with the assessment mechanism of the SIDS. Miss Don has anything different that was in his recollection, is... Yeah, okay.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, I wanna get back to the recommendation this city in front of us here, the recommendation is to consider adopting resolution number 1905, providing notice for a public hearing at 7:00 PM at the March 23rd, 2020 city council meeting, to consider modifying the Belmont Promenade CID. I'm talking about the TIF for now, we're just talking about the CID period, and that's where I'm having all this problem, is why we have to revisit and have a public hearing for a CID, which is already a valid CID, it's already been voted on. So, I don't know, we still haven't explained that.
So, really kinda what we're trying to do is, there's some housekeeping issues with the revised plan, it's been...
We're talking about CID, right?
Right, I know, I know.
It's like CID, it's what it says right here.
But I think some of those things and those timelines have to then change based on the way those CIDs are assessed, because I know that there's a discussion of the CID sales tax, there's also a CID special assessment as part of that conversation, and so that actually runs through the county. So those timelines have to kinda match, and so it's my understanding that it's a little bit more of a housekeeping type issue, and I'll ask Heather to jump in if I'm off base here, but that's really kinda the issue, it's more of a housekeeping and clarification based on when this was approved a year ago versus where we're at today.
And maybe, I think I thought it would, I do obviously understand your question, I'm just, I'm hesitant to answer unless I'm certain with that, our finance council, but I think it has to do with the fact that we did change, there was a change in the project plan when we changed the number of units and the square footage of retail, and that did change the plan, and it changed the plan from what was originally included in the SIDS project, and so I think the finance council wants us to go back and have the same plan in both the SIDS and the TIF, to make them consistent.
That does raise question. If the TIF is so changed that we need to redo the CID as well, then maybe it is substantial change. So you, we're kinda going around in a circle here and chasing our tail, coming back to, maybe it's more of a substantial change than I thought, what you just laid out there for me was, oh, there's quite a few different things here now, we got change in housing, we got change in retail use, we got all this stuff, what's that big a change? Where it requires us to have a hearing on the CID as well, maybe it isn't an insubstantial change, maybe it is a substantial change and we need to start from scratch. So, that raises a bunch of issues, what you just said.
That's what the governing body gets to decide, obviously, but I think from the finance council's view, they proceeded in this way only to make sure that what was in the SIDS matches exactly what was in the TIF.
That's exactly right. While we feel that it's insubstantial, we just want them to tie the two documents is all, and this is the process.
And that can't be an administrative process, that requires a public hearing and all that, just to, I don't know, it just seemed like a real overkill here, but whatever.
Mr. Zimmerman?
It's a formality.
It is.
It's what I hear, this is a formality.
It is.
It's obvious.
Okay, any more questions or comments from the council?
I think it'd be fair for the audience to understand exactly how it has changed. So it went from the number of apartments to another number, and then the square footage of retail to another number.
That's right.
Can you enlighten us to what those are?
You bet. Originally, we were planning on building 249 units, and we're now building 148 units.
When would that, when did that change occur?
Probably, probably, we've been working on it for, what do you think, seven, eight months already?
I believe the rezoning was approved by the council at the December meeting, yeah, but you guys have been working on it for quite a long time.
For quite some time now.
There's a change in developers too, right? In the building?
We did.
Correct.
We did. And then we've also had, the area was zoned as mixed use, and now it's, we rezoned it in December, like Nolan just... in December, like Nolan just mentioned, to residential high-rise. So we'll have two commercial pads on the east side, on the south end, and then the 148-unit apartment complex.
Okay, and so the CID that was approved last year, nearly one year ago today, was actually for a greater development than what we're actually getting, is that right?
It was for a different development, so that's why we're changing the documents, just so that they're accurate and reflecting what we're actually building. The financial analysts for the city and for our team are both working on the numbers, and now that we've gained a pad that will most likely be the home of a restaurant, hopefully a high-end steakhouse, is what we're looking for, the sales that they will generate will hopefully exceed what we would have had, you know, just with the apartment building. So we feel that it's a better option for the project and for the community.
Okay.
So to Ms. Thomas's point, and like Mr. Zimmerman said, administrative, so basically, if we don't have this public hearing to match these documents up, then we're putting on file inaccurate documentation.
That's exactly right.
And all we're doing is. And all we're doing is want to put inaccurate documentation on permanent record.
You're 100% correct.
Okay.
In the original.
I'm sorry, to follow up for earlier, the recommendations we received from finance council and our financial consultant, to be perfectly upfront, one of the options was do nothing. I mean, that's literally the first, those are the two words that are used, do nothing. And proceed with new waivers and consents from the property owners. The second option was to submit a new petition, and the third option was a slight alternative, which was to use the existing petition, notice it up for clarification of the project, consistent with the petition, obtain waivers and consents, and have a hearing to modify the CID and levy the specials. So do nothing was an option that the finance council originally considered, and then they decided to go the more cautious route, is what I'm.
That's right.
Understanding.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Go ahead, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes with Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Kimling, and Mr. Nappin in dissent, and I vote, do I need to vote aye? Oh, vote aye. We have six anyway though, don't we?
I vote aye, we're good.
I didn't vote, I didn't vote for it.
Oh, I didn't hear you declare, I didn't hear you vote no.
Yeah, I said nay.
Oh, okay, sorry. So I vote aye. Next item on the agenda is staff items. Item number one is to consider revisions to policy statement number 56, PS 56, comprehensive user free schedule related to small cell fees and sign variance fees.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we've already voted on that item. We're now on item number two, the legislative plan, and we have a motion and a second that was already made on that.
I thought we already voted on that, that we voted, yeah, in approval with Mr. Jenkins.
But we didn't take the vote.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number three is to consider approving the final conceptual design for Wilder Bluff Park. This project is included in the capital improvement program and is funded from the Parks portion of the voter-approved Parks Pipes Pavement Sales Tax. Two public meetings were held to allow for community input on the final conceptual design, which is a treehouse adventure concept. The recommended actions, consider approving the final conceptual design for Wilder Bluff Park. Parks and Recreation Director Holman is here with the consultant team to make a brief presentation. Welcome, Neil.
Hello. On a lighter note, we would like to, a little excitement of building a park, okay? So, and it's spread out over the neighborhoods, the excitement. We've got, we've had two great, over 60-plus, and I don't, I don't count staff, even though most of us live in Shawnee, and I don't count the consultant. So, count who comes to the meetings, we had two sessions. On the first one, I think Kurt, was that the first one? Lisa and Kenny were second, and no matter, you were, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, you did come. You did.
I'm easy to forget.
I apologize. So, but a lot of excitement, so a lot of good discussion. As I said, with the naming of the park, you know, we had the dots, we had all, and it kind of went, trickled down, we went through some revisions. The team is here tonight to talk about how we got there, where the final plan is, is right now. So with Confluence, Hank Myers, we'll talk about the overall plan, and then we've got Zach Bodine that we'll talk about, he's from SFS, will talk about the shelter structure. So, and then we've also got other members of the team here, if there's any questions. All right?
Good evening, I'm Hank Myers with Confluence, I'm the project manager on this project. Wanted to just introduce our design team, and then really talk about our design process and the goals and vision for what we've heard, there was the desire for this park project, and then get into the final master plan of it. As I mentioned, with Confluence, we are the team leader. We're a landscape architecture and planning company here in Kansas City, with eight offices throughout the Midwest. I'm also here with PJ Novick from our office, and Andrew Holzman. Zach Bodine with SFS is our architectural partner for the project, and then GBA is our civil and survey consultant, with Centric being the CM at risk for the project. The design process, as Neil mentioned, we have had several public input meetings, but we did start out back in early November with the Walk the Park project, where we get all the staff and team members out to walk the park and get a better understanding for the site. That was followed by two public meetings on the 21st of November, one with a group of third graders from the Belmont Elementary School, where they provided us input on their desires for the park, and then a public meeting on the 21st of that evening to provide input on the program for the park. We then came back with design options in January, following our design team shred right before Thanksgiving. The public meeting number two was in January 15th, where we presented those concepts and received feedback on the two options that were presented. For the Walk the Park effort that we had back in early November, as I mentioned, we did get out with the full design team and contractors and city staff to walk the park, understand what the critical vistas were, what we were looking at on site, and get a better understanding for the connections that needed to be made to the surrounding neighborhoods. You can see four potential trailheads coming in from each of the surrounding neighborhoods there, in the arrows, and I should have oriented everybody, 55th Street to the south there, and then Belmont Drive aligns on the eastern side of the southern property boundary. The goals and visions for the site, the goal is to create a destination unique to the Shawnee area, drawing a multi-generational population for unique experiences while preserving neighborhood environment and wildlife habitat. The vision statements and how we plan to achieve that, number one, by providing residents and neighbors with accessible amenities, connections to the community, and a variety of expenses or experiences for all ages and abilities. Number two, to develop recreational experiences and aesthetics complementing the natural aesthetic of the existing property and minimizing the impacts to surrounding neighborhood. And number three, highlighting and utilizing the established prairie and forest areas for unique recreational experiences. So I think you'll see, as I run through these design concepts, how we achieve that. I mentioned the public meeting on November 21st, we were onsite at the local elementary school, and we opened it up to the public to provide a dot exercise for various programmatic amenities on the site. Some of the highest vote-getters were preserving the native prairie, incorporation of hard trail and soft trail, restrooms, bike trail, and then a nature water play area. And then you can see here, on the right-hand side is the base map that we took with us to the Belmont Elementary School and shared with the third-grade classes there. What we did was we provided them an 11-by-17 that they could take home along with the program amenities, that they could generate some excitement within the community and the local parents to really understand what the opportunities were for the park. And then on the left-hand side, you can see one of the design concepts, when they brought all the bases back and started working together as a team to outline what some of those opportunities were. And some of those opportunities were more usable than others, but it was also good just to see the excitement that was generated by that. During the design team shred, back before Thanksgiving, we generated two concepts with city staff, one being a terrace patio concept, the other being a treetop adventure concept. There's elements of each of these that were taken into the public meeting, but ultimately the treetop adventure was the selected concept, but there were parts and pieces of the terrace patio concept that we were asked to incorporate into the final design. I don't get into all of these elements because I will get into the blowups of each of these different areas for the final master plan that we're bringing forth tonight. Some of the, some of the pieces that were consistent between the two plans were incorporation of soft trails and hard trails. You can see on the northern side of the property, we've taken a very light approach to how we were addressing this with the incorporation of the trails. There is an overlook, but the existing vegetation on the north side of the property is really a pristine prairie area that we want to keep that way. We will be doing some remediation and removal of some of the invasive species, looking at Bradford pears and some other trees that have started to grow in that area, and so we do plan on removing those as part of this project. And then we also have the incorporation of the four trailheads throughout the project. In the southern part of the project, there are a number of existing spores that were brought onto the site, dirt brought in from other projects throughout the city and placed on the site that we will be able to utilize for our benefit on this project. One of those benefits is the creation of a sledding hill along that eastern boundary of the project. You can also see that we have a entry berm that we will have limestone block walls on either side of, that really give you that sense of driving through a native prairie in Kansas, and as you enter the park, will really be a dramatic piece for the facility. Also, a open lawn space, this is just more of a manicured lawn space that we will plan on irrigating. And then at the intersection of Belmont and 55th, we do have a crosswalk with the median that we have incorporated to allow for safe crossing for kids in the area to get to school. As you blow up the area on the north side of the event lawn, some of the elements that you'll find are synthetic turf hillside, a playground area for ages two to five, and then you can see that we've got a treetop playground here that launches off of the upper part of the turf hillside and gets you out actually into the tree canopy. So you will be 12 to 15 feet up into the trees that allow you to really interact and have a play experience that most kids don't get in most of the city parks these days. We also have a nature splash pad area, that will be, it will have a number of different rocks, probably some spray jets that come out of the ground, and even the possibility of a small dock or an area that kids can just sit on and let their feet kind of dangle off into the splash pad area. We will try to incorporate some shade as part of that through a shade sale. And then, as you get closer towards the event lawn, you can also see that we've started to incorporate a two-sided fireplace into the structure, and I'll let Zach touch on that a little bit as well. Zach?
Thanks. My name's Zach Bodine with SFS Architecture. The architectural component will consist of a single structure. This will house a 60-person shelter area, as well as the dual fireplace that Hank mentioned. There'll also be a men's and women's restroom with small utility area. The design of the shelter is really intended to create a warm and inviting presence within the park, anchoring the lawn area to the south and the entry, as well as the play area to the north. And that's achieved through the use of warm natural materials, as well as a roofline that opens up towards those two features. Primary materials will include heavy timber for the structure, as well as natural limestone that will clad the seat walls that line the perimeter of the shelter, the fireplace, and also the walls of the restroom. Screening elements will be included, including a trellis that wraps around the perimeter of the shelter that provides a little extra shading and enclosure for occupants. Lastly, the west elevation facing the parking lot provides an opportunity for signage to greet people entering the park from the parking lot.
Thank you, Zach. The final bit of this presentation are just a few perspective images that we've developed. This is looking from the south to the north towards the shelter. You can see that we have incorporated some terrace steps from the shelter down to the event lawn, just provides another opportunity for some seating areas, and also off to the west side of the event lawn as well. This is a perspective image of the splash pad area. You can see the way it terraces down, this is incorporated as part of some of the desired elements that were identified from the other concept that we have tried to incorporate within this one. And then here, you can kind of see, looking from the west towards the east, towards the shelter, just some of the different various elements that would be incorporated as part of that hillside for the playground area, and also just kind of the launching point there on the upper part of the hillside, and then the rope nets and the tunnels that would actually extend out towards the trees. And the final one here, this is just a view of the shelter coming in from the parking lot. You can see that it gives us the opportunity to really incorporate the Wilder Bluff Park name into the side of the shelter, and really creates a nice sense of enclosure and opens up views towards the event lawn area. So with that, the next steps will really to get into final design work and construction documents. I believe Neil, or we will be having a final design contract brought to you here in the next few weeks, and then the plan will be to start construction in the summer of 2020. With that, I'd be open for any comments or questions.
I have one real quick, and then Ms. Larson, then Ms. Constance. So at my mayor's coffee just this past Thursday, it was brought up again, we have a grandmother in the city who's very passionate about having an inclusive park for her grandchild in a wheelchair, she takes the grandchildren, and she's, all nine of them, and the one in the wheelchair just has to sit and watch the others play because there's nothing they can do. And she even suggested things like a xylophone where she could sit in her chair and at least play music and things like that. Is there anything in this park that is considered inclusive, or is there anything that we can add, like the musical type of instruments that they're putting in parks and stuff now?
Sure, so you can see here, this location right here, there are some lower swings that would be inclusive, that would allow for transfer from a wheelchair into those swings. There's also a two-to-five play area, which really doesn't show up in these perspectives, that would be lower, I don't know the age of the child, but that would be considered inclusive as part of that. And then, in most cases, and I'm fairly confident in this one, that there will be some sort of a rope structure that allows you to actually get up onto these platforms, that's part of the experience, that would allow them to have a like experience to the rest of the kids.
Okay.
And I think, I like those little music things, sorry. And those can be, I think those could, we could look at, at those as well.
We can incorporate them, and I think that would be nice with the whole nature thing, to have the musical sound, like the wind chime type thing and stuff throughout the park.
Those are good things, where the kids can come, if they're wheelchair-bound, there are things to do, because we definitely want, on the spray feature, I know that they'll be able to play in the spray feature, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Larson.
It's a definite one for everybody.
Thank you. A couple of things, I don't, I don't want to minimize this idea of inclusive play because it really means a lot of things. It's not just play that is okay for people with wheelchairs, it is play for people that have different kinds of developmental abilities. And the purpose of inclusive play is that they can play literally side by side with people that are more able-bodied. And I really don't want to lose sight of that. When I was canvassing for the campaign, I talked an awful lot about this park, and I came up with a list of things, and it was a pretty consistent list from the meetings too, of what people really wanted. too, of what people really wanted, and having inclusive play really was something that people were interested in. The other things I heard were a splash pad. They wanted natural grasses. They wanted places where adults can play. They wanted access to their neighborhoods. They wanted, when I told them more about it, they wanted to know more about the history of the area. And I want to give you kudos because I really think you checked a lot of those boxes, and I know that you all were really listening to our neighbors. I'm gonna, oh, one other thing is that I was contacted, and I believe Ms. Menaple was contacted as well, by a community member that lives on the north part of the park. He has native grass that he has invested a lot of money in growing and maintaining, and it's, he's almost created his own little wildlife habitat in his yard, which is really amazing, and I think consistent with the goal of what we're trying to do for the area. What he's concerned about though is that, he's worried that there's not going to be enough of a delineation between what is the public park versus what is his private property. And he has requested that there be signage to differentiate that, so can one of you speak to that?
Yeah, I was contacted by Neil about that, and we have put together some language for that homeowner that they are planning on sending him, that we will be, as part of this project, incorporating some sort of post and signage along that northern property boundary that is identifying that people should not be trespassing on that property.
Yeah. And the last Wednesday, we came and did this presentation at the Planning Commission, and if you, those minutes will be available Thursday, so if you can, if you'd like to look at those, listen to them, we stated that, yeah, he's done a wonderful job, CRP project. We benefit from that, from the north winds. That's on the park property. It's already established. We've got gorgeous prairie, wildflowers, so, and we want to continue that, I think, with going and doing the invasives and, and just expanding what, what Mr. Bursing's done, and expanding that to the south, and then having the signs up before we even start construction. So, so there's no chance that no one will go north of that property.
Ms. Constance?
You guys have really done an incredible job of pulling together resident feedback. I'm super impressed, and I also really like the connection you made with students and families in the school. I was just wondering if we could possibly have some opportunities for volunteers and students and families to get involved in maybe some of the invasive removal, the plantings, et cetera. They've just been a part of the planning, and if there were some volunteer opportunities in the summer where people could get in the dirt and, and help, I just didn't know if that was part of the process. It might be, it might be a little too much. It was just a, I was just wondering how that might work out.
We do have that at other parks that are established, the contractors under deadline. I mean, he wants the, he wants the building go. Yeah, third graders, just, you know, blowing bubbles and, maybe, that may be helpful, but I think we'd like to get the park open.
Understandable.
Okay.
Speaking of the invasive species though, why is a pure tree considered invasive? I would think that'd kind of be a cool feature of the park, that if we had fruit trees for them to pick fruit.
Brad, Brad, Brad first. It's not a, it's not a.
Not a fruit tree.
It's not a native fruit tree.
Okay. Mr. Menaple?
I'll just say as well, I mean, everybody's excited about this park, and you guys have done a great job, and I agree, you take a lot of feedback and incorporated it in. One of the things I appreciate is being, I feel like the city's responsive and listens to citizens, so if you could work with the resident that Lisa was talking about, I think that sounds like a great plan, and thank you for being receptive to that. I think we might have some additional resident discussion when we open it up, and I'd like to see if we can work through that to resolution as well. But in terms of the, the park plan, it looks great, just some logistics around.
Sure.
Mr. Jenkins, and then Ms. Larson-Bennell, and then Ms. Thomas.
Yeah, folks, I think it's a good plan. I think the kids are going to enjoy it. I just had one concern, and it's kind of a cross all the parks concern. We do a really good job with the little bin kids, and we do a very good job with the kids up to about 12, to see if we get them all covered, but all those other kids from 13 to, I think, 17, you know, they're, we have a place for them to go to. I'd like to see them get out, recreate a little bit and get off their dead butts and do something, so, you know, it'd be, I'd like to incorporate them in somehow, maybe not to this park, but have a place, a destination place here in Shawnee where, you know, maybe kids are a little older, they're not in there banging into the eight-year-olds and knocking them down and stuff. They're, they could kind of, they can go to, and have some activities there that would be interesting for them, and get them involved in the park as well, so they'll be enjoying it as well. That's just a thought. I've looked at this thing many, many times, and just today hit me. You know, you can look at a thing a hundred times and not even think about it, then you bang, all of a sudden it just kind of jumped out at me, and I saw that clearly delineated, get to little ones, and you get to the next stage, and oops, it kind of stops there, you know, it doesn't go to that next level. I just, just thought that out for you, it's true. Thank you.
I will say that the playground piece, when we presented this to the Parks Board, as well as to the Planning Commission, we did have some of the adult members that said that they actually wanted to get up in the playground and play around in the, in the tubes.
See, I climb the ropes at Airfoot Park. What are you doing, Eric? Ms. Larson-Bennell and then Ms. Thomas. To be clear, the treetop adventure component is adult-friendly, right?
Correct.
Okay, good. That wasn't actually my question. One thing I want to make sure that we are preserving, and we had this discussion when we talked about the naming, is that we have a little bit of a budget allocated for the signage, both for the nature aspects of the park and also for the historical aspects. We'd love to see a sign akin to what we had at Garrett Park, where we could really do a storyboard about the wonderful history in that area.
And the Anderson family, yes. And I talked to Sharon Swanson already about that, so.
Ms. Thomas?
Great job. In this park?
Yes, I mean, they'll be able to utilize the hard trails.
Will it eventually hook into the stringway park system?
On that side, I think once we, if you go down, Claire Road should be an on-street, and that should take you down to the Riverfront Park, and then hopefully that will eventually, that's the thought.
But that's a thought?
Yes.
That's being played into?
All the parks match up with an on-street system, and then, then you would also have, you know, through schools, you know, the parks, commercial areas, and then those all tie together.
Okay. If we could look at page 14 and 15, I want to pay just some attention to the trail entrances, the trailheads, I think they're called. And I live on Woodland, and we have a park that comes out right onto Woodland, and I know that on page 15, there's reference that has a crosswalk with a median.
You know which one's 15?
Uh, left, it says 15. Oh, master plan enlargement. Uh, one more. Bam, bottom right corner. And we have on Woodland, one of those medians where the, the trail comes out to Woodland, and there's a, there's like a crosswalk across the street, but then there's also a median. And it's a very, very, anybody that lives out there knows bikers come blazing out, and I know they've put up a stop sign, but they'll just turn right into a lane of traffic and not go through the crosswalk. They'll go alongside the median, and then go diagonal to whatever street that is by Tony. I want to ensure that we're not repeating that, because I worry about it on my own street, much less duplicating it again.
Then let's stop bicycling into the city. I mean, I mean, I, which is hard.
I have bicycles, Tony, as he comes down, as I come down Woodland, they've now raised the speed limit from 35 to 40, and he's coming out of a bike trail, you know, going two and three miles an hour, and doesn't have a clear vision, and it's just a matter of time.
The rescue islands that we have are the right rescue islands to, it takes you, as soon as you cross into the, into the rescue island, it points you right towards ongoing traffic. So, those are standard, those are what the traffic engineer, that's what, those are what we use. The other, we do have, I mean, at some point, you got to slow it down and just, there's an ongoing street. So.
Right.
I mean, you just.
I just don't know, is there something you could put on the sidewalk as people come off of the trail to enter the roadway?
Sorry, is this public comment?
My name is Paul Askew.
I haven't opened it up to public comment yet, so I'll, I'll open it up for public comment as soon as the council's done. Thank you.
So, I mean, we can, we do look at that of how, if that's a big how on bicycling.
Yep.
It is, I mean, it's, unless there's a special nugget out there that, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
If there's something that could just, just, because when you have cars coming through 35 and now 40, you know, and you've got someone exiting, and they'll come up through the lane, because if they go through all the way across, it's too hard, I'm told, to make a hard right turn on the, on the opposite side of the roadway. And so it just seems very dangerous, and it's concerning every day when I go down my street, and I, I want to make sure we don't do.
No, thank God we don't have any accidents, but I think some of them shoot on there because it is an on-street bike lane. So they stay in their lane, and they just come whipping right around. This does not have, on 55th Street, there's no bike lanes.
Okay, good.
So they have to stop, or they'll hit the car. So, I mean, they've got to slow down. And most of it, the biggest impact was for the people, the, the, one of the biggest things that I heard was for the kids and everyone to be able to get to school. That's why all the parents are real excited.
Right.
So.
Great idea, love the park, just a concern.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Ms. Larson-Bennell? We have a bicycle advisory committee in Shawnee. Have they weighed in on this, or given any comments or feedback about the park?
We meet every month, and so, yeah, it's, I mean, there's not a, like I say, there's not a golden nugget. If you're on the bike, you need to kind of watch yourself.
And obey the same traffic laws?
Yeah, obey the same traffic laws as everyone else, so.
Unfortunately, we can't enforce that unless we get, yeah. Any other questions or comments from the council? Ms.?
Oh.
Should we? Should we? Turf hillside and the sledding hill the same thing, or those two different?
Those are two different pieces. So, the hillside along the east over there would actually be natural grass, whereas the hillside for the playground area would actually be a synthetic, which would allow kids to climb up and down, and would probably incorporate a slide and some other climbing elements on it.
So what is the wear and tear on that with sledding and stuff on it, though? How long is that going to last?
This is natural grass.
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you said artificial.
This isn't like Stump Park. I mean, if you want a snow hill, you go to Stump Park. That's, that's a big snow hill. This is just for little kids, so they can get out and have some fun to wear, I mean, this would be 10, 12, 15 feet tall versus 75.
So my size of hill.
Yeah. Mine too.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, I'll climb the ropes, but I'm not going down any big hills. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Paul Askew. I live at 23803 West 53rd Terrace in Highland Ridge. I want to say thank you to Parks and Rec for what they've done. I was at the public meeting in January, I was to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting, I was to the Planning Commission meeting on this. I appreciate everything they've done, getting the input from my neighbors and myself for this. I want to specifically address the concern concerning the bicycles, because I rode my bicycle on 55th Street when the weather's nice almost every day. And the thing that I like about the way this is set up is that most cyclists who use the trails here are not going to use that crosswalk in the median, they're going to use the entrance to the park, which is offset from Belmont, which makes it safer for cyclists. You will have some coming across, but big thing about the median is the schoolchildren who live on my side, on the north side of 55th, are now going to have more control crossing with that median to get there. I share concerns about cycling in that area, and that's why I like the offset. I like the fact that they're putting a median there because it will help control that, and I like, I really like the offset because if I'm on the trails there, I'm not going to come across at the median, I'm going to come out the main entrance of the park because it's offset from Belmont, and it's easier to see traffic in both directions. It is something we have to pay attention to, but I don't think there's going to be significant problems. It is a different intersection than what you have to crossing at Woodland, because you have the bike paths, and you have a, a big offset on the bike paths for when you cross that median. So I think it's going to be safe, and really like what they've done with the design of the park, and looking forward to seeing it, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience like to speak to this item? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Tom Tritt. I live at 5321 McCormick Drive, and I live right near the eastern trailhead access to this park. And my concern is, right now, 53rd Place is the dead-end street that extends from McCormick Drive to the west to the current boundary of the property. It's about a lot deep. And the plan, as I've seen it, it appears that they're going to pull that trailhead access out to, almost to McCormick Drive. The idea was, as I understand it, that they wanted to eliminate parking in that area. They didn't want people parking at that trailhead access. Well, my concern with that is, right now, we can use that street, that dead-end street for parking. Once people recognize that there's access to the park at that area for bicycling or whatever, they're going to drive up there. Some people are going to ride their bikes on the street. Ideally, they can access the park and, and not come up and drive their cars to that area, but I think once people realize that there's access to the park from that area, they're going to drive to that. Some people are going to drive to that area, and they're going to park. If the parking is not available on a dead-end street, they're going to park in our cul-de-sac. And currently, there's not enough freedom in our cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac to park anyway. So, my concern is that, and what I would like to ask is that they leave that trailhead access back to the boundary where it is right now, and leave that short street in there for parking when people do come up and park.
Thank you. Anyone else from the, oh, Mr. Holmes?
I just would like to comment. That's going to create a terrible hazard. I just think that's going to create a hazard. That's not a parking lot. It's, it's, it's a dead-end street. And what I've seen when I went out there, you've got two, six cars, both on each side. There's no way people can get in and out of there safely. When the front car wants to leave, they've got to back through two, two sets of cars, and then we're going to get into people's neighborhood, or people's yards. That's, it's just not, this went through all the city departments, and they wanted, they asked that that street be taken to the, the main street, instead of having like a cutout, or, if you're going to add a, if you don't want people to park in there, then take the whole parking lot out, and so, because you're, you're, you're just saying come and park there if you're going to add like even a three-stall parking lot. I just don't, I guess I disagree with that on, on having an indention. It's going to be hard to snowplow. I'm not going to drive all the way over from Red Oak and go find, go into this neighborhood and park in front of this gentleman's house. I'm going to go up on 55th, get in the 60-car parking lot, and then have fun. I mean, these are all little neighborhood, I have these all over the city. I've not, 29 years, I've not had one person call and complain I've got parking on my, on my street. I just, so, I mean, I, if the city engineer, or, or the, or I don't know, if the engineer is planning, I mean, maybe that, but I see, I see it being more dangerous if we leave the, if we leave the dead-end street a full yard width, and then trying to get back, maneuver back out, because you have to back out. So, I just think that's, anyway. That's just my two, one cent.
And I'd like to add right back to that, I understand his concern about that, that it does create a problem when you have people parked on both sides, and then they have to back out of that area to get back out. But if they're going to come up and park anyway, then they're going to park up in front of my house and around our cul-de-sacs on, on that, on McCormick Drive, and that's not acceptable either.
Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you.
Anyone else from the audience like to comment on this item? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Ooh, this is fancy. Lee Thomas, 565 Woodland Drive. Now, for two points actually, so the one about the driving and parking thing, me being the young man I am, if it's too hard to get through the little parking lot, I'm parking out in front of your house. Absolutely. It's easy. It's easy. I just pull that up and done. Can't perceive what someone else is going to do. We can't do that. Secondly, the little bike lane, if we go through this slideshow, if you can go back for me, there's an entrance right into, oh, ooh, thank you. Let's see, keep going. Stop, back, forward a little more. No, right, there. This trailhead bottom right-hand side there, so that is what Councilman Thomas there was actually talking about, that goes right into Woodland Drive. When you're riding your bike out through there, you really can't see which way it's coming and now the speed limit has been raised to 40 miles per hour. Myself driving this road, I've almost hit about four cyclists who are not looking and who have little headphones in. It's not safe. It isn't. Again, perceive what other people are going to do. Their law-abiding bike is going to slow down, go around, do a little thing. More often than not, they're not going to do that. So let's not repeat that and let's also fix what this gentleman was talking about as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience have any comments? Seeing none, I will accept a motion. Move to approve. Second. Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item number four is to consider bids and award contract number 2020012 engineering agreement with Walter P. Moore related to the 60th Street reconstruction project number 3505. This project is included in the capital improvement program, is funded from CDBG and street improvement program funds. Seven bids were received and staff is recommending awarding the bid to Walter P. Moore in the amount not to exceed $111,455. Recommended actions, consider approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract as approved by the city attorney. Does anyone in the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items. Item number one is to ratify the Senate monthly claims February 24th, 2020 in the amount of $3,920,818.84. Is there any discussion from the council?
I have one question.
Mr. Nappin?
Yeah, not to get in the weeds here, but in just, in looking over and getting used to looking at these, I have one question. $43,597 to card services, what's, one of those, it's just not, a lot of the other items, most of the other items are much more descriptive.
So that, that is the P-card, purchasing card check that goes out to the card company?
So that's like the monthly claim?
That's the, kind of the single check for that cycle. Correct.
Any other questions from the council? Ms. Thomas?
More thoughts or considerations of process on P-cards? Who has them? Having worked for the state of Kansas, I had a staff of 400 people, $44 million budget, and I didn't have a P-card. So, I mean, it seems strange that it, I think, what's our budget? You know, it just seems that there are a lot of P-cards and expenses whenever you consider just the process that could be followed. It, it just is hard to track.
Yep. And so that's something that we've been actually already reviewing and have been discussing to, to look at those. If there's any issues, that everything does go through a formal approval process, receipts, employee supervisor, so it does go through finance departments, everything goes through approval process as well. So.
So is there a possibility of us learning how many P-cards there are, who they're issued to, and how we can streamline that, how they can come back in where there are not so many people have them? So it is a more controlled way of doing business?
Well, and we feel like we do have the controls in place, so we can provide those documents, what that looks like. A lot of it can just depend on even like travel, trainings, things like that, per diems. So we go through that process, what that like, looks like checking in and out of hotel or lodging establishments. There's things that we run into in terms of that. I mean, and there's ways around it, right? We can go through a whole process to restrict credit cards and what that looks like. And then also, then we go through a whole process on what it looks like to either provide petty cash and the reimbursement process to track that. Then you go through a process that somebody pays something out of, on their personal card, do they get credit card points for that? And then try to get the city to reimburse them. And then so you go through an approval and tracking process, a set of issuing checks for the actual purchase, but then actual, actual issuing checks back to the employees. So then you create a little bit of a issue.
We can magnify it, drag like that, but I, but I know 2,500 people, you had specific hotels you stayed in, you know, the cities, you know, maybe in Johnson County, maybe the counties have different relationships, the state has different relationships, that we could piggyback on, number one, for cost savings. And number two, you don't have, you know, people paying for it with the P-card or anything else. It's a document that you take in and it's billed directly to the city of Shawnee versus keeping track. You have a per diem, most people eat more than other per diems and that's fine, someone on a diet and they don't. So maybe they pocketed $10 or something like that. It just seems reasonable to, to investigate.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Chris Durbin, 7412 McCourty Street. I think about a month ago, we lost a lot of visibility specifically to these items that we're talking about, the P-card purchases in this check register. We used to have a reporting capability in the old finance software that allowed a report to be run that showed all of the P-card purchases categorized by department, by, you know, the purpose, the notes that went along with it. And I think with the new finance software, we lost that capability, but we were examining how to get it back. And we're still not seeing it. We just see those checks being written to the P-card company. And it feels like now we've lost a lot of visibility on the citizen's side as to where our money is being spent. Any resolution to that coming?
Yes, we're still, our finance department's still working with our vendor to try to go through reporting process. We can bring that back. Don actually, I think, made some additional adjustments to this check register as well. So we're trying to get closer to the, to kind of where we were before in terms of that reporting mechanism.
Okay. Yeah, we'd like to see that soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience like to speak to this item? See, oh, I'm sorry. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Margot Seymour, 749 St. Would that be part of, like, the P-card, would that be part of a quora or would that just be general knowledge?
Any purchase like that is open to, cancel parking.
So like, if we were to request it, say, tonight, we would be able to get information like that?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, it wouldn't, you wouldn't have it tonight.
Of course not. No, but I could make the request, okay? And then, secondly, are you allowed to disclose who you bank with?
Yes.
Who do you bank with?
So I can let Don go through that. So our P-cards are actually, hold on, I'm addressing, but through UMB Bank.
Okay, cool.
Don Cobbey, Finance Director. On the checking accounts with Great Western Bank, and then we do have P-card systems set up through UMB, which is the primary P-card provider probably to the region. They, they have it. And they're one of the ones that provide not only that, but a lot of the information we need electronically to eventually be able to make this work long-term, so.
Thank you.
Do you know if you have any extreme fees or anything like that for your banking? Or is it all covered or is that also an outlet where you could be saving money?
Do we have any fees with our cards?
Okay. I, I think we put it out to bid every year, so I'd have to honestly go back and look to tell you for sure what those fees are. But there is, on P-cards, there is a certain percentage on those. And that seems to be standard. Again, that's something that's put out for bid at a certain time. You know, again, I haven't been here long enough to have gone through that process, but typically there's very few respondents in, in the P-card area because it's very specific to two or three major banks in the region.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the audience like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none. And I do want to add, too, that I personally, just during my time on the council, is when we got the check register online. And I, I don't know of any other city that has that transparency that puts it online. So I think it's awesome that we do. And it is unfortunate that the past few months while we've been switching systems, there's been an issue with it. But I, I just personally am very proud of the city that we have, that we are so transparent. We put it online for everybody to see because the other cities don't, so. So I will accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Anyone in the council have an item they would like to discuss?
I think that we, I'm sorry.
It's just so the people listening and the people taking the minutes know who's talking.
I think we have a council member who is celebrating today.
Yes. So are you, are you going to sing to her?
I, you know, I'm getting over a cold.[1755.73]